Good morning. I'd like to call this work session for April 8th to order. If you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and Salute to the State Flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the Constitution of the Constitution, and for all.
A salute to the flag of the state of New Mexico, the U.S. Civil War, and the perfect relationship among the U.S. and its allies. Moving on to the next item will be approval of the work session agenda. Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, have a second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to public input, do we have anyone for public input? No public input. Moving on to our presentations under eight quarterly reports. First presentation is from Hidalgo Medical Services, Dr. Dan Otero.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk to you again today. My report today is going to be a little bit longer than traditional, and so I'll just go ahead and jump right in. In your pre-submitted reports in your packet, you will see the standard statistics historically provided for medical behavioral health, dental, family support, and senior services delivered for the first quarter of 2025. In addition to that, I'd like to start talking about an HMS program. HMS received a small grant from Freeport-Mack Moran back in 2018 to complete a study on the needs of seniors in Grant and Hidalgo Counties. Dr. Ann Egan, along with other local stakeholders, completed that study, and the information gathered was extremely beneficial. One of the positive results of that work was in 2021, we started the HMS Compassion for Seniors Program. The program provided financial support for area seniors to support quality of life needs based on their income levels. With the support of Freeport-Mack Moran, Ms. Priscilla Lucero, Ms. Marilyn Alcorn, former Senator Saya Correa Hemphill, and others, and the employees who managed the program, over $130,000 of support was given to over 222 seniors in the last three years. The types of support included things like replacing water heaters, car repairs, paying utility bills, transportation to the Mayo Clinic for Cancer Care, and other critically important services. Unfortunately, this program was not funded this year, and we are formally announcing the end of this program for seniors effective today until additional funding sources are Specific to senior services through our contracts with the New Mexico Area Agency on Aging, a couple of years ago, we heard from members of this board that area seniors were contacting you with concerns about the quality of services provided. HMS took this feedback seriously and responded quickly to identify what gaps were leading to these concerns. When personally talking to seniors at that time, most seniors were very happy with services, and we did receive a few recommendations from them directly. Regardless, we made changes in leadership oversight and made additional enhancements to service delivery and quality. We are happy to report recent survey results received from 150 of our area seniors from all five HMS senior centers the following. When asked, "What is your overall satisfaction with the services you are receiving?", seniors reported a 92% satisfaction rating. When asked, "What is the overall quality of the services you are receiving?", seniors reported 92% satisfaction. When asked, "What level of customer service do you receive from HMS senior service staff", seniors reported a 94% satisfaction rating. Additionally, we surveyed our senior service employees. When asked to rate their overall satisfaction with their employment at HMS, 10 of the 13 respondents rated as either satisfied or very satisfied. When asked to rate their connection to the mission of high-quality services to seniors, 12 of 13 respondents rated themselves as either connected or very connected to the mission. This data emphasizes the fact that we are currently providing great services to our area seniors and with satisfied employees. HMS has been operating the Ina Mitchell Lordberg Senior Center since approximately 2005. In 2017, we were approached by the Grant County Administration requesting that HMS operate the Grant County and Silver City Senior Centers, which include Silver City, Membres, Cliff, and Santa Clara. I was proud at that time to recommend to the HMS Board of Directors to partner with local government agencies and the New Mexico Area Agency on Aging to provide these critically important services to our Grant County area seniors. After eight years, we have maintained a strong relationship with each local government and the New Mexico AAA. Regarding compliance, we received a letter from the AAA on March 31st, 2025 memorializing their acceptance in our demonstration of compliance for the recent fiscal year 24-25 findings from their annual compliance audit. Unfortunately, our ability to receive adequate federal, state, and local government contributions will impact the future for seniors. HMS, using its financial resources, in FY 2023, covered the operating losses for the senior center in an amount of $144,253. And in fiscal year 2024, HMS covered the losses in the amount of $345,350. And we are projected to have a loss this year of $275,738 for FY 2025, which comes to a close in June. This is the combined three-year loss of $765,341 to operate the five senior centers. After working assertively with our local legislators, recent conversations with Cabinet Secretary Coltenbach from ALTS and the AAA and our local government agencies, we have not been successful in acquiring adequate funds. This is not sustainable for HMS or any organization to provide these critical services without adequate funding. HMS has decided to work with the New Mexico AAA and Cabinet Secretary Coltenbach from New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Division to begin transitioning services back to the state, but specifically for those area senior centers in which we are not receiving adequate local government contributions. Again, these critical actions are required of HMS if we cannot get immediate financial support. Hidalgo County, the city of Lordberg, and the town of Silver City have provided additional contributions in support of the senior centers for fiscal year 2025, whereas Grant County has not provided contributions since October 20...excuse me, since October 2023, and the local governments of the mining district have not provided contributions at any time during HMS's overseeing the centers at Santa Clara. We are extremely disappointed and saddened with the lack of funding that has been allocated to area seniors. We at HMS know that our area seniors and current employees will be the ones who suffer due to this lack of financial support. We have notified our employees of our final plea and request for adequate funding to serve our seniors, and we will also be letting our seniors, approximately 450 seniors, know that at this critical time and lack of funding from both the state, the state legislatures, ATLS, and government agencies puts us in a very difficult situation, and we're hopeful that we can come together to get some funding to continue providing services for our seniors. I will stand for questions.
Do you have a question, any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Otero. Can you tell me the shortfall for 2025 again with the other funding that's been proposed?
Yes, ma'am. The overall funding shortfall is exactly for all five centers, $275,738.37. That's annualized through June.
And that's with the amounts from the other entities, the town and Hidalgo County and the other sources?
And our traditional state allocated funds. Yes, ma'am.
I have a follow-up question if I could. Dr. Otero, thank you for the report. What is the annual operating costs as it currently stands for the services that are
I'm going through my spreadsheet, make sure I get the number right. Total operating costs are $1.4 million, sir.
Dr. Otero, do we have a copy of that budget in our packet?
Not in your packet, sir. It's been provided to the county manager.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, I thought I heard you say that Grant County does not provide any money. We have...
No, sir. If I may, if I may, Grant County did not provide any money for the last fiscal year. You have historically provided great support and partnership, for sure. And I have that historical...
Okay, well, we, as a county commission, we do budget, and I think our budget line item for senior centers, because that's one important piece to me, is $50,000 a year, I believe. What we do need from you is an invoice, so you can get that money.
I'd be happy to resend that.
Okay, thank you. Any other question, Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. I will now turn it over to Dr. Aragón.
This will be Dr. Ari Zaga. She's the Chief Behavioral Health Officer and Medical Director for HMS.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager Web. Thank you for allowing me to be here today to provide you an update regarding our behavioral services, specifically our substance misuse services. The main thing I just wanted to update is that HMS continues to work on expanding behavioral services and is concentrating more recently on mobile crisis response. We are looking at developing another division within behavioral health specifically to implement mobile crisis response and also continue to expand behavioral health services through other grants, federal grants that we've obtained. We've recently hired some certified peer support workers and have continued to interview more, and so hopefully we'll continue with that. We also have, regarding our substance misuse services, have been interviewing and have decided on a candidate that we're going to make an offer to for our director, which has been missing since Adina Yuland retired. And that's been a big loss for us, but hopefully having this new person come on, if this person accepts, will add to being able to continue to provide those substance misuse services. Looking at the graphs that we typically provide, and let me see if I can forward this here. Do I just press the forward arrow to...it's not moving forward. But you have it in your packet, so that's fine. That's okay, yeah. So the first graph we provided was related to the services in total, the outpatient to class the substance misuse services, and we had a total of 137 unique patients. So that's not the number of appointments, but the number of individual people who've come that month. And with regards to completed appointments, we have 339 appointments. Also, looking at MAT services specifically, we have a total of 19 unique patients in March and with a total of 21 completed appointments. If you look at the graphs, that's less than what we've had in the past. One change that we've made is with regard to our MAT coordinator and the person taking over these services, she's also a certified peer support and is really excited about working with patients in this way and has a desire to work with, specifically with justice-involved people, and so I think she's going to do a really great job of collaborating with the detention center and with other people regarding these services that are needed out there. So hopefully, that will reflect in months to come with regards to retaining patients in the program and also welcoming new patients. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doctor. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you, appreciate what you do. The other comment I want to make just for the public is Grant County, I don't want the public perception to say, "Grant County, we only really have two senior centers, the one in Membres and the one in Cliff. The rest are Town of Silver, Santa Clara, other communities." So just, and you're good there, thank you. So just so you know, those are the only two senior centers that we do have. I don't know what the other communities are doing with theirs, but I can tell you that for public perception, we only have two. Okay, moving on to the next presentation is going to be Grant County Community Health Council, Ms. Emma, and she is the Community Health Council Coordinator Program Specialist.
I know, I feel like the title is sort of a mouthful, but good morning, Chairman, good morning, Commissioners, and good morning, Town Manager Web, or County Manager Web and other county leaders. Thank you for allowing me to be here today to present on our quarterly report. So everyone has a sort of highlights sheet. I was hired on February 7th to undertake the coordination of the Grant County Community Health Council, and I have hit the ground running. We had meetings in February and March and focused on a variety of different things, including senior health and coordinating with Melissa Luna of the New Mexico Aging and Long-Term Services Division and Lee Vada of Adult Protective Services to start the planning of future senior programming in Grant County, including scan prevention and fall prevention. We have also begun our planning sessions for the Community Health Needs Assessment, which is a biannual community survey to help determine community needs around health. On the back here, if you want to join the statewide planning, there's a QR code that you can scan to start joining the planning sessions for the implementation of the Community Health Needs Assessment. And we have also been in conversation with HMS as well as the Regional Medical Center because those medical services as federally qualified health centers also are required to do at different intervals, community health needs assessments, and we want to make sure we're channeling our efforts to ensure that we are making the most of our efforts. We also engaged in senior center outreach that involved New Mexico's community survey data collection as well as information distributed around the 988 crisis line, medication disposal, and medication safety. We've been able to strengthen partnerships both in town and in the greater county, including the Members Valley Health Action League and the Members Valley Health Fair. We've been in conversation with Norm Wheeler and the Sixth Judicial District Court in terms of outreach specific to combating opioid overdose, as well as continuing word with our established partners, including the school systems and various social service and medical providers here in the county. On the back, I've highlighted some of my onboarding that has happened, including mental health first aid, familiarization with the New Mexico Department of Health Risk and Resiliency Survey results, as well as health council talks and peer learning sessions with the New Mexico Alliance of Health Councils. I was able to participate in naloxone train the trainer so that I can be trained to provide overdose, opioid overdose prevention and response trainings and the administration of naloxone or Narcan. I also underwent cannabis and fentanyl prevention trainings with the DEA, as well as trainings in screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment, also known as ESPT. And in upcoming quarters, I will be undergoing a QPR train the trainer, which is a suicide prevention training, question, persuade, refer. And then reiterating, we would love to have you involved in the planning sessions for the community conversations surrounding the Community Health Needs Assessment, so you can scan that QR code to sign up. Our next health council meeting will be Thursday, April 17th. We have speakers coming to highlight Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month, as well as Child Abuse Prevention Month, as well as recurring items on the agenda that include the Youth Substance Awareness and Prevention Coalition, and we have added senior health as a recurring agenda item as well to make sure that we're paying special attention to this population. At the bottom, I've included my email address and my phone number. Any of you are welcome to call or email me. I want to make sure that I am exceeding your expectations in this program and prioritizing the things that are our county needs in terms of health and wellness. Any questions, comments, insults?
Thank you. I appreciate what you're doing, and I thank you a lot. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Thank you. Well, do you?
I just wanted to compliment you on the flyer. It's very friendly and enthusiastic and informative.
I wasn't sure really what the typical format is, so it's maybe a little bit more colorful than the other ones, but that's kind of how I roll, so I'm glad you appreciate it.
Any other questions? And if you think of any later, again, please do reach out to me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So moving on to the next item on the agenda will be discussion. This discussion will be regarding amendments to the Animal Control Ordinance, which is O-16-4. Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you for putting this on the agenda. The reason why I wanted us all to consider this ordinance is because last year, when I was campaigning for a commissioner, I attended meetings and I heard a Grant County resident come to multiple meetings expressing concerns about peefowl in his yard and had tried all sorts of things and had called and emailed and really just felt very frustrated because peafowl are not included in this animal control ordinance. It's just cats and dogs. So I know that, on the one hand, changing an ordinance, you know, for one person seems kind of unusual, but I feel like it is a reasonable thing to do, and there's really very little harm, or there's no harm. The only person who would be inconvenienced would be the owner of the peefowl, but they, in my mind, should be responsible for their animals, and peafowl are very large, and there's several that are, like, pooping and invading the person's yard. So I basically just really feel for this resident, and I, as a commissioner, want to be responsive to people's needs and requests. So that was one thing. And then we also heard from another resident who suggested that the fee structure, the penalties for not following the ordinance, that I think it says $25, but then the judge has discretion to lower the fee, and so it had actually been reduced to $10. But this was after over a year of just frustration and going to court, and it seems like it's not proportionate to the amount of stress. So I thought, well, we have two issues here on the same ordinance, so why not look at it? And my suggestion would be to add peefowl where it says canines, felines, comma, and peefowl. And then also to revise the fee structure with $150 being the penalty, and then for second offense, it could be up to a maximum of 300. And I know that the judge can change that, but that's outside of our control. So that's why I brought it up.
So I think my comment here would be that, and I see the, looking at the penalty page, most of it is $25, but I think that the penalty assessment, petty misdemeanor, these are all misdemeanor violations, so right off the top of my head, I don't know what the fees are. I guess you did look at that for it to go to 150 or 300?
Yeah, that was just a proposal. I remember the gentleman who came suggesting the increase said we should add some zeros because it was 25, and he said it should be 250. You know, I think whether it's 150 or 250, just as he pointed out, if someone has violated the ordinance, there should be a consequence that's meaningful. And so either of those amounts seems more meaningful than the 25.
I mean, right now, I mean, it's a good discussion, and I'm glad you brought it up. I think that first step would be for you probably to call our county attorney, discuss with him the changes that you want to make on here, and then that way we can, because there is a process as far as...go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners? Staff has already been working on this and looking at some potential modifications that we've encountered along with the items that you want to address, and so if the rest of you have comments, what we would like to do is incorporate all of those comments into one draft and send them to him one time and have him look at it. We are doing some research around fees and our fee structure, which is a little lax. There is some confusion around another article, the dangerous dog, so we've had a comment about that, so we're doing additional research on that. The one thing, as we've been researching the addition of peefowl, the roadblock that we're running into is what do we do with them? So the Humane Society will not take them. If we seize those animals, then where do we take them? What do we do with them? And so we're trying to find other local governments that address that, but that's been a little bit of a roadblock there is to figure out what do we do with those animals if we do take them. But if there's anything else, we can work on the language, work with the attorney on the language. I don't know if anyone else has any other comments.
Well, can you and your staff work with Commissioner Stevens closely to see what's going on there, and then it could come to us for further discussion, and then we can, if we're happy with it, I guess we can follow the process, whatever we have to do, advertise, public hearing, all that good stuff. So if you guys can do that, because I mean, I understand what Commissioner Stevens is saying, I totally agree, and I think our fee structure is a little low, but at the end of the day, like Commissioner Stevens says, a judge has all the authority in the world just to charge a court fee instead of the fine, but anyway, at least we're doing something, so if you don't mind doing that. Anything else, Commissioners?
No, I appreciate it being brought up. I agree, some changes are probably needed, and I'd like to read through this and see if there's other, if I can provide any other input from the perspective of people I've met within the county.
Anything else, Commissioner Stevens?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. We can move on now. Moving on to county reports. First report's going to be from County Fires, Chief Gross.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Manager, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, manager, staff, ladies and gentlemen. So things I've been working on, we have been working on our financial budget with our departments and the finance department. We are continuing our fire marshal inspections. It is an annual inspection. They come every year to do their inspecting of the records, equipment, maintenance, and whatnot at each fire department. So there are a number of those getting scheduled for later this month. Been working with the airport manager on our new apparatus that we'll be using out at the airport. We did successfully complete, all of our departments completed all of their Public Employee Retirement Association reports, so I was real happy that we got those all done. County chipper program is going very well, pretty high demand. I may have a few customers that slipped through the cracks and didn't get back with, but largely, I think, everybody that's wanting it has been able to use it with a little bit of delay due to it already being rented out, but that's going well. Currently attending meetings with all of our VFDs. Saturday, there was an open house and public meeting in White Signal that was sponsored by the Tyrone Fire Department and was in attendance there and gave some information and tips to the audience on defendable space and our response and things of that nature. I know there's a big meeting this Saturday here as well, and I'll be in attendance at that one. We did have a countywide training Saturday before last with Water Shuttle. It was very well attended. We had participation from Silver City Fire, the Forest Service, all of our volunteer departments for the county were present, and I think there were some folks from the Bayard Fire Department as well. And that training went very, very good. We accomplished our goals and our objectives to support water flow for a structural fire in a rural area where we didn't have hydrants. So we far exceeded what we were shooting for. Current county fire restrictions, I'll talk about that in just a minute. Our annual service testing for all eight of our volunteer fire departments occurred, and the airport for SCBA's, and that went very well. Everybody's equipment was tested and passed. There were no fans anywhere. And as far as the month of March, we did not receive any new applicants at any of the departments. And so, fire restrictions. So pursuant to the Grant County Fire Code Ordinance number fourteen dash two, I feel that the current conditions are severe and extreme drought, that we're at a state of fire emergency. So consequently, the following restrictions shall be in effect, and I think you were provided a copy probably at the last minute there. I can read through the whole entire restriction if you wish, or take questions as you wish. It will be in effect today. Yes, sir. I understand.
Regarding the restrictions or just in general?
Just in general.
So Chief, did you guys establish a dispatch protocol for fire departments when there are fires in certain parts of the county or the municipalities?
We're working on our mutual and automatic aid, which would cover that with dispatch. They've been provided the current maps. I understand there was a glitch with the town of Silver City's boundary in regards to their response area three miles around the town, but so I think that's been, maybe Mr. Fuller will address that, I think that's been cleaned up and taken care of, but not specifically, no, they're operating on our automatic aid that we still have in place from two thousand eleven.
And you're including the municipalities such as Bayard, South Dakota, and Hurley area?
Our automatic aid and mutual aid agreements that are currently in place from two thousand eleven do cover all of our municipalities, yes, sir.
Okay. Reason I ask is I got some phone calls from some people out in the Bayard and Hurley area, and they got concerns that it seems that any time there was a fire, certain fire departments aren't requested. And, you know, Chief, when you're in dire straits for assistance, you don't care what color the fire truck that shows up, and I've had this discussion with you before, can we just follow up and make sure that we're dispatching the closest appropriate fire department to those scenes to help out? Because it's also a protection or a safety issue for the firefighters that are arriving first on scene. I want to make sure as much help is getting, especially with these windy conditions, the fire restrictions, everything in place.
Yes, sir.
If you can, please.
I can follow up with that and make sure that we're all clear on the same page with that.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
That was also discussed at the last dispatch board meeting as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just had some concerns, some people just feel that certain fire departments aren't being dispatched, and it's just, you're further, I'm further, let's not call in, we've got to get home. When it comes to emergency, we've got to get home. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that.
Are you done, Chief, or?
Yeah, unless you have any other questions. I mean, our conditions are bad. We've been dealing with people burning all over the place.
I've got one more question.
And that's where we're at. So we did have a fire in Members off Highway thirty-five called the Bear Lake Fire that was started by an individual burning weeds, as he admitted to us at the scene. So the conditions are dire, and I know our departments are very concerned as well, as the citizens throughout the county.
Commissioner Medina has a question.
Chief, are you going to have people patrolling for this restriction? Are you going to have fire departments out looking for burning, or are you just going to go on calls from dispatch? How are you going to handle that?
Probably we'll start off with calls through dispatch. As time goes on and our drought conditions do not improve, I will recommend some preventive patrols.
Okay.
All of our volunteers are going to be given this notice and asked to distribute it in, you know, key locations where it can be visible in their areas. The enforcement will come from our sheriff's department, and you and I will probably need to have a sit down for a few minutes. And, but as the situation develops, we probably will start putting in some preventive patrols.
Thank you.
Do you have one other question, Chairman and Chief Groves?
This sort of relates to another issue that we've been talking about pretty often on the Board of Commissioners, and it's the disabled vehicle storage on so many properties and junk properties, so to speak, and the additional risk of fire hazard they present. And I appreciate here it says, "Do not dispose of greasy or oily materials," except in approved combustible receptacle. Anyway, even though I think our ordinance or our enforcement officer has been following up on a lot of these properties, and I see action there, it doesn't, most people are getting a business license and putting up a fence, but there's still a fire hazard there, and I don't know if we should consider either additional changes to that ordinance to where they, if they are going to have those kinds of properties, they have to get an inspection from you all on a regular basis or something, that they're maintaining their lots in a way that they're not going to create additional hazards or something. But I appreciate what you're doing here, and I agree with it.
Yes, sir.
Is that it, Commissioner?
Yes.
You know, one question I do have, are we, through your office, through our website, are we posting any of this, or are we doing news articles, giving them the info? Thank you.
This will be posted to the website, Facebook page, in the newspaper, and I'll do a spot with the radio stations specifically for the restrictions. And post offices, things like that, we'll have our departments distributed, and I will as well.
We talked about looking at potential signs that we would put up at each fire department, so if someone was driving by the fire department, they would see that fire restrictions are in place.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next report, be the detention center, Mr. Aldusola.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. We currently have one officer opening at the facility and four officers in training. We did conduct interviews, and we do have a job offer for that one position. Accreditation update, we continue to upload documents, review and revise our policies, and also prepare for our mock audit walkthrough here at late summer of twenty-five. On March thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five, our population was eighty-seven detainees, with an average daily population for March of eighty-nine. Included in your packet of our restrictive housing quarterly report for the third quarter of two thousand twenty-four, and also the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty-four, again, those are inmates that we keep track of that spend more than twenty-two hours within that cell. Oftentimes, there are suicide watches, are people that we get in that have mental illness that we have to stabilize, and also people going through withdrawals from substance abuse after being arrested upon intake. Our RISE program for March had thirty-one RISE participants, with twelve in the facility and nineteen in the community. Our current, our quarterly report for the RISE program for the state is due, so I'll be including that in your packet next month. Also, the RISE funding is ending here in June of this year, so we're doing an RFA for continued funding for one more year, and that RFA is due April twenty-fifth of this month. So we're working on wrapping that up and submitting that. Also, our succeed learning collaborative within the RISE program, we're going to have a training for our RISE staff here April twenty-first through April twenty-fifth. I have good news, we're going to move forward on our shower project, which will begin in May of twenty-five. We're continuing to work with maintenance on that shower project and also on the laundry room project. Also, we're beginning to review that male unit control enclosure project that I explained to you on the inspection. Key event dates, we're going to begin transferring detainees for that shower project beginning sometime in May. Without getting into too much of logistics, for security purposes, I'll be meeting with the county manager, and we are going to have to move inmates and transfer them out as we work on the showers. We've got to make sure we clean up those shower areas and get any mold out, make sure that it's dry before they continue working on that project, and once the whole bathroom area from the floor to the ceilings is done, we need to let that dry also. So they're looking at a turnaround rate between five and six days for each area. They're going to work on three areas at the same time. Also, we updated that five-year plan, and now we're working with the county on the budget procedures for the next fiscal year. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Moving to our next report's going to be our emergency manager, Mr. Scott.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Give you my report. Going through the current projects, the Hazard Mitigation Plan still is up at the state. Andorfima, I'm not sure where it's at yet, but I haven't heard any word back, which is good news. No good is good news. I mean, no news is good news. They haven't asked for any changes or any revisions, so that's good. Going down to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the RSP was put out for bid on April second, and we should have, proposals should be in by May thirteenth, so hopefully by the end of May, we'll have a contractor selected to start that project. As far as the generator project goes, I'm going to plan on working on the RFP this week for that one and try to get that done and have that out hopefully the first week in May, I'm hoping. My goal this week is to get that written and sent up to the state to review. The wildfire risk reduction plan to the state, I think y'all have heard some of the radio ads we have out there, and put some social media posts out there, and I've got a lot of literature out there in all the four municipalities. I've also been out to all the rural post offices and put literature out there. Members, Hanover, Hila, Cliff, and Buckhorn all have, I've been out to each one of those and put information out there for folks to see and read. And one project I didn't put on there, I've been working with the Department of the Dam Safety Bureau with the state and the, I guess, the Hila Valley Watershed District up there, they have ten dams up in that area, and we're redoing the emergency action plan for the ten dams. So I've been providing them all the information that I can provide from my side of the house, and we should have that done in a couple of months, I'm hoping, have that completed. As far as future projects, the same money that we're using this year for the community outreach, I just applied for that for next year, so we'll get that same pot of money again, I hope, so we can keep this, the ready, set, go and defensible space program going. Also, on the eighteenth of March, I submitted a grant to fund our, the contract with OnSol for our Code Red and IPALS. I put in the grant for that to take us through twenty-thirty, so it'll cover us for the next five years. And going back to the senior centers, I've got a grant application done for that, for the generators for the two senior centers, one in Members and one in Cliff. And as soon as I get the quote from my contractor, I'll go ahead and submit that also, so that's another important project. And just real quick, like Roger was saying, I've got Dr. Kram coming in next Saturday, this Saturday coming up, the Living With Fire Seminar. He's one of the foremost experts in creating the defensible space. That's his sole job with New Mexico State University, so I'm bringing him in as part of the whole program to make people aware of the defensible space and ready, set, go. And that's about what I have for the emergency management side of the house. I'm open for any questions.
Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you for that report. I attended the chamber luncheon and heard the Public Safety Power Shut-Off presentation, and I believe you said that you had applied for funds for backup power for the convention center.
Yes.
And to me, that's really important, you know, that we have a place where people can go in an emergency that has power. Did you say that that would be summer, that you think that might?
That's the RFP I'm going to be working on this week. That's what I'm going to start working on, and hopefully I have it done in this week or two weeks and send it up for the state to look at real quick, and hopefully we'll have it out. Hopefully the first week in May is what I'm hoping for.
Thank you.
It's very important to have an emergency, to have an evacuation center with power to it.
Thank you, Chief.
I'll go to the second part of it, if you have any more questions for the emergency management part. Going to the code enforcement part, Commissioner Flores, I kind of cleansed it up a little bit, so it makes, kind of makes more sense. I got with the code enforcement, Fernando, we went through everything, and I think it flows a little bit better now, you get a better understanding. We have twenty-one outstanding cases, and some of them, we're at, some of them, the property owners are out of state, so we're having a hard time trying to find correct addresses, but as soon as we get those, you know, we're trying to get all the notices out we can. If you look down at the court results, it's kind of funny, the Adam Castillo and Lorraine Trejo on the twenty-fourth and thirty-first, they were the properties involved in the fire out in Members. So again, there was a lot of junk involved with that fire, propane tanks, cars, et cetera, a lot of stuff, and I give the guys credit. A member showed up on scene and counted up. a lot of stuff, and I give the guys credit, Members showed up on scene and counted up heavy fire conditions, and it already extended out into the field, but I already had, I'd already called up the Wilderness Guys and had them on their way, so they kept the fire contained into the field out there to a couple acres, while the Members Guys worked on the junkyard part of the fire, so it all worked out good. And then, I did report out to the state that night to do our due diligence with the hazardous waste part of it, just to make sure we covered our part that they reported out to, and I took lots of pictures and sent it all to them, and they didn't really feel like they needed an immediate tension to come down the next day, but they will be out here in the near future to come look at that property and make sure it's cleaned up. I did take some pictures of some waste oil, which I thought would be a hazardous waste, but I was informed that's solid waste in that hazardous way, so hopefully they'll have a representative about in the next, next month to take a walk through and see anything that's been done to clean up that property. And I'm open for any questions, I mean, we've been pretty busy getting, trying to get court dates, et cetera, for all these, the citations we have out there.
Commissioner Stevens.
I know before you were working on trying to have better communication so that the code enforcement team is aware of when the court dates are, has that been going better?
Yes.
Good.
Probably need to have a conversation with their county manager, I just, on court results, the first one, I just rather not speak on it right now, but that's baffling to me, that's a different story. Commissioners, do you have any other questions? Commissioner Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Fuller, I appreciate you cleaning this up. I just want to commend you and the code enforcement officer for working hard. I know it's tough dealing with property owners, but I just wanna assure that the public, that we are working on the trashed yards, the fire dangers, and the, the cases, the citations are, they look to pee up, the pending court dates, you know, there's almost enough for the citations, incomparable fifteen to nineteen, which is great, and the cases closed at seventy-four, so it, pending cases is twenty-one, which is very, very workable compared to the last number. So I do know that you guys are working hard, it is being noticed, and I think it's being noticed by the, by the county residents as well, and I appreciate your continued work on this effort, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, we're trying to get the proper address for, I guess, the first one there, the seek, you know, so that's, that's the one we're really trying to work through, so.
No, it, it has nothing to do with you guys, I appreciate what you guys are doing, I just, I've, I've never, well, it doesn't matter, but I've never heard of the rest of that paragraph there.
Well, that's, that's the way it was explained, that's what, that's the paperwork we got back from, from court, so I kinda put that same verbiage in there. Yes, identifiers, yes, that's a new one.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to next report is gonna be our information technology, Mr. Baca.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For current projects, we are continuing with finalizing our server virtualization project. We still have the remaining two servers left to go. It requires some more coordination with our vendors, because these are database servers, and many people access them at the same time, so we wanna make sure we get that right. And we've also had multiple things come up to where we've needed to postpone that, so fortunately, we are not in a hurry with these, but we do still have this on, on schedule. We're continuing on with our financial rebuild. This week, we have our Tyler Technologies Project Manager on site with us to help continue on moving that forward, and it's definitely progressing, it's moving forward quite nicely. Regarding our updated applicant tracking solution, this is now live on our county website, so whenever somebody clicks on the employment link, anybody interested in applying for a position, will see this new updated applicant tracking solution. So it's a much more formalized, much cleaner website that allows people to apply for open positions, it allows them to set up a profile and upload their resumes, so they can do that once, rather than having to do so every single time they wish to apply for a position. So it's definitely much more organized and a lot cleaner looking as well. From the management perspective, HR has been doing a great job as far as keeping that updated and current, and making sure that the information within it is absolutely what needs to be for the, for the interested applicants. Aside from that, recently, we've been working on some upgrades over at the conference center, be it the networking side of things, the networking devices that actually run the site, wireless access points, updated security cameras, all of these things have been ordered and are, we're working on installing these. A lot of this is behind the scenes, so it's not like it's going to be this grand thing when you, when you walk in and see major changes, but it's definitely going to help as far as the overall functionality of the site and the ability for us to manage it even better from the IT perspective. Regarding future projects, some of the things that I've been working on with my team, I reference it here as a device policy implementation, but it's more so a device control. And what I mean by that is, through our antivirus solution, we have the ability to manage what happens when somebody gets, for example, a USB drive and they plug it into a computer here. So the ability to manage that and figure out what happens afterwards are the things that I'm referring to regarding this policy as well. So aside from that, we're continuing on with the typical day-to-day work with all of the tickets that come in, so we've been progressing on that quite nicely as well. I'm open for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Moving on to Planning and Capital Projects Director, Mr. Lockett. Or, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Hori.
Yeah, no problem. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Manager Webb. You know, I like to just keep all those projects up there so you guys have a visual of what's happening, but I wanted to report on some, some milestones with this. So the Upper Membris Volunteer Fire Department, those underground storage tanks, they're installed, they're placed, and actually working on that punch list process right now, so in the next week, we're gonna be setting the concrete, and then the project will be commissioned and then completed, so we're on the, on the final stretch of that, thank goodness. Regarding our North Hurley project, just wanted to share that we are looking at a time contract extension. Throughout this project, we've had issues with shallow utilities, I would absolutely consider this in unforeseen conditions, so anytime they put a shovel in the ground, they're either hitting a water line, they're hitting a gas line, a sanitation line, or what they call the inverts, where the, the elevations weren't called out correctly and the water line is actually too shallow, so they've had to lower that, or the gas line or something of that nature. So these were just unforeseen things, we had no idea about until we, we actually started working on that project, so. But with that said, we're looking to place the pavement on the first week of May, and then the project's planned for a hundred percent completion by the first of June, and by that, I mean, the contract will be off-site, streets will be swept, road striping will be down, everything will be completed a hundred percent. Regarding future projects, I just wanted to say thank you for approving that resolution on March twenty-seventh, so we can proceed with that Ridge Road, Arenas Valley, and Little Walnut project. Funding for those projects should be released to us either later this month or the first part of next, and then we can start coordinating with our engineers and contractors at that point. I did misstate on the key event dates, so we actually did not submit the TPF application, we submitted a TPF, they call a PFF, which is a project feasibility form, and so that is basically just us putting it out to NMDOT for them to consider this as something that they would invite us to apply for. And so last Friday, myself and Manager Webb, we spoke with the folks that are on that board, they gave us some pointers, and, and told us some improvements we could make on that project feasibility form, so if it chooses to go to that next step, or if they allow us to go to that next step, then we'll be, we'll be in good shape for that. And so there is a resolution in front of you Commissioners today, or to approve on Thursday, rather, so if we are approved for that, we can go ahead and proceed seamlessly, so. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Go ahead.
So, I got the opportunity to see Mr. Holgian this weekend in a different light, he participated in the Tommy Knocker Bicycle Race, and I thought it was crazy riding thirteen miles, but riding thirteen miles in the snow, when he walked back to the trailer shivery, and I was like, that's, that's determination, sir. I want to tell you, I appreciate the supporting those kind of events, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens.
For the public safety building, the, moving into CDs, what is that?
Thank you for the question. Sure, that is the construction drawings, so we finished that initial schematic design, so if you will, the building is laid out, they determined which offices would be where in that schematic design phase, we got an estimate, and so with that, everybody was in agreeance, or agreement, and we said, this is what works, and we're moving into construction drawings, so now we'll actually start to engineer things like the mechanical units for air conditioning, what electrical work needs to be done, if walls need to be erected or demolished, whatever that looks like, so. So that would be actually something that we would be able to take out for permitting or work with a contractor on to get pricing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, doing a great job, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Now we go to Public Works, Mr. Lockett.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I have the airport director's report for you currently. So the FFA will be conducting our annual Part One Thirty-Nine certification inspection April fifteenth through the nineteenth. This inspection reviews all aspects of our operation, including airfield, training, records, and our RFP program. Grant County Airport is held to the same operating requirements as all other commercial service airports in the U.S. Some training dates on four-one Wagner equipment, trained our airport staff in the new backhoe attachment for the skid steer. The Roger Groves and Lauren Gonzalez will be traveling to Dallas-Fort Worth for their annual live fire recertification as required by the FAA regulations, and then Mr. Gonzalez also completed his EMT basic recertification in March. Some briefings, on March fourth, the USDOT announced the award of Grant County's essential air service contract to events there. Three-twenty-nine, our tanker base received two aerial resources, a type one and a type three helicopter. The base manager believes we will have receiving two single-engine air tankers, the seats by mid-April. Couple pictures for you all to see, the road tack in action is the type one helicopter, and the new backhoe attachment on our, the skid steer. Stand for any questions for the airport. Moving on, facilities maintenance. So under current projects, we're still gonna be continuing on our admin, building front portico resurfacing, that's gonna commence this week, starting a little bit today, but mostly tomorrow. We'll, we'll hold off on Thursday so there's no noise, and then we'll try to get it done in the next couple of weeks. The Cliff Park Baseball Field Work Week, we've been putting a lot of effort out there because Little League's starting, doing some things out there, trying to get it looking nice, putting some sand in, try to resolve the gopher issue, and just filling in holes, just general looks of the park. Still paying the detention center, conference center flooring installation is, is completed besides the code base, and if you all have had a chance to go through and look at that, I got some pictures I'll show here at the end, but it's turning out really nice. Also, the conference center flushable urinal installation is complete now, too, we're just doing some sheet rock work there. For future projects, conference center hallway facelift, we're gonna be putting some, some facade-looking rock material down the hallways that's gonna tie in with the new flooring, should look really nice there, kinda separate our facility from other facilities that you rent, and just, just give it a general facelift and nice overall look. Our admin building employee designated outdoor space in the back, that's gonna start soon, as soon as we get some of these other projects knocked out. Detention center training mock cell door installation, detention center shower coatings, our admin building signage, and also our detention center laundry model replace. Detention center, the front office was painted under noticeable accomplishments, the Fort Baird Pavilion painted the interior, I'll show you some pictures of that in a moment. Admin building front rail system installed and painted. Our admin general break room seating area high top, we put a repurposed countertop in the back here, and then behind the conference center, brush clearing and defensible space between there and the, the baby boot camp, the old El Green place. We changed in the Baton Pavilion, the, the dark brown to a wider, wider color, it just highlights it and makes it look a lot more nicer in there now. Stand for any questions for that. Fleet maintenance, so March, we did sixteen oil changes and inspections, one transmission service, one blade had the cutting edges replaced, six units had tires repaired or replaced, two complete brake jobs, one battery. All the equipment has had the fire extinguisher serviced, we continue to prepare our units for auctioning, and still Toby is our, is our fleet manager down there, I wanna thank him for all the work that he's putting in and keeping that place going. Also hired Mr. Britton down there as a mechanic, I'd like to help him and, and welcome him aboard to our, our county, as he's gonna be a great asset for us. Stand for any questions for fleet?
No, sir.
Onto the road department. So equipment operators have consistently been maintaining all county roads as well as addressing complaints, they're currently being utilized to assist with current projects due to lack of moisture needed to effectively maintain roads. Truck drivers have delivered an estimated three-hundred tons of materials to different road sites in the county shop to have a stockpile of material to efficiently disperse as needed. Labors have patched numerous roads, trimmed trees, maintained culverts, and performed other related tasks. Royal John Road was completed after seven-hundred tons of material was hauled in effectively to build up the road base. Additional material was added to the Greenfell Road, Burke Loop Road, and Fort Baird Road. Johnny McDonald Low Water Crossing Project has commenced, detour route has been implemented and will be in place for the next couple of months. Additionally, we will begin the shoulder work and patching on our chipso projects. As far as future projects, we're prepared to move forward with our SP and CAT projects over the next few months, continue to address complaints and resolve the issues promptly for road safety and maintenance, and reminding the community to be patient and vigilant for road maintenance and routine blading. Some pictures there for the packet. Royal John Roads, as you can see, most of these pictures, when we're adding material to these roads, we just, our, our roads just lack the material being on top of there, so we're down to rock and places, and it just, you can't blade that, and so by us doing this maintenance, this kind of maintenance, getting material on those roads, it really helps out. Burke Loop, Johnny McDonald, we started with that, you can see our three water trucks in the center of that picture, and just like to thank you all for approving that, working with Manager Webb and the commission, it just helps us out to get these tools in place that we can do our jobs effectively. And then March eighteenth, windstorm we had in Gallo Street there in San Lorenzo, we had a big tree go down, and so got into some power lines, and we had to wait for PNM to get there and get that all resolved before we could get in there and get all that cleaned up, so. That's been the, the highlights for the road department for this month. Stand for any questions?
So I have a quick question, Fort Baird Road, what part of Fort Baird, how far does it? When I think of Fort Baird Road, I think of in front of Baton Park, I thought that went to the county, I mean, to Santa Clara.
Mr. Chairman, so we actually go all the way back to the Crumbly Place.
Crumbly?
Yes, so we maintain that as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you for the report and thank you for the pictures. I heard again from some Wind Canyon residents, and they've expressed, you know, that they appreciate the blading, and I think when County Manager Webb and I spoke, the plan was to try and add new material to the, that main road, Camino de Viento, is that what it's called? Yeah. And so they were just asking if that would be something that would happen this year, or if that would be next year with next year's budget, and I said, I thought it would be next year, but is that your understanding?
So Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stevens, so we do have some money left over that we're gonna be, we've stockpiled some, some, some different, well, I guess, to be truthful, it's the McCully tailings that we use over there, and so that stuff we've been using, it works really well on the roads, we have that stuff stockpiled, so we'll be putting that on their road as well, they're in the queue, we just haven't got there yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving to the next item is the agenda review, County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Fire Department. Agenda for Thursday, we have a public hearing in regards to the proclamation for fireworks restrictions. The statute says that you may hold a public hearing, we thought it would be beneficial to. We thought it would be beneficial to go ahead and start scheduling those public hearings to give the public the opportunity to speak in favor or against the proclamation restricting the use of fireworks. Under proclamations, they just mentioned the proclamation declaring extreme or severe drought conditions, imposing fireworks restrictions. As you will see in your packets, the area of extreme drought has grown since last month, so that just reinforces our decision for fire restrictions as well as the restrictions on fireworks. Any questions? Item C, consideration of proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. We do this each year in honor of our E-911 dispatchers. Item D, consideration of proclamation declaring April as Fair Housing Month. We also do this on an annual basis, just declaring April as Fair Housing Month. And item E, proclamation for CDT trilies and the CDT Coalition 10th Celebration. Any questions on any of those? We'll move on to presentations. State Representative Luis Torasis and State Senator Gabriel Ramos will be here to give an update on the 2025 legislative update, or on the legislative session, my apologies. We will hear our monthly report from Robert Whitaker from GRMC. Moving down to new business, we are asking for your consideration for the purchase of new lifts for the Fleet Department. The money is in our budget, it's just over my authority to approve, and so we're asking for your approval to purchase those lifts. Item J, this is.
Safety thing, right? Ours are old and all that, so just for you guys to see that, think of that. Okay, sorry.
Item J, this is the approval of the Detention Center Annual Inspection Report that you conducted last month. And so the statute has changed, requires your approval of the report. The draft is in there. We only noted one deficiency, and that was the broken window in the attorney visitation area. Everything else was satisfactory. So you will just approve that report. Questions? Item K, approval of the asset disposal list. I realize this looks extremely alarming, but these are, as a result of our audits and work with our audit firm and continuing to clean up finance, these are all assets under 5,000 that should have been removed a long time ago. And so this is cleaning them all up, and we're able to start the new year fresh and correct. So it is a lot, but these are all things that should have been removed. And you will see, some of them have a value of a dollar.
So, Mr. Chairman and County Manager Webb. So are, what happens with that asset disposal, that list of equipment? Are they auctioned off at a public auction here, or do they get shipped off to a bigger city to do that?
We can dispose of them in various matters. Statute allows if it's obsolete or non-reparable, you can dispose of it via trash. You can auction them off, you can either have a public auction. We've started using an online auction, which we've had better results from. You can donate items to another governmental entity if you choose. So there's several, several different ways to dispose of those assets. But most of these don't even exist anymore and should have been removed. So they might be here, they may not be. A lot of them are already gone, been disposed of and just not removed. So this has been months' worth of work with Andrea and her team and our auditors. And so we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it's been, like I said, months and months of hard work, but we're getting there.
Okay, so this will get them off our books. We're not going to see the same list of a bunch of this in two years from now?
Better not, no, sorry. No, so we've implemented new internal controls to be able to stay on top of these things. We are doing, we have contracted with an outside firm to come in and do our inventory for two years in a row now to make sure that we're doing it correctly and not relying on staff to sign off and certify that those items are still within their departments. So we'll continue to do that until we know that we've got a good grasp on what we should have on the books.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Moving on to resolutions, consideration of amendment number two. Jason, I'll let you explain this one.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so we noticed on our amendment number one, when we were trying to get some maps ready for ISA determinations for our LGRF project, it's the CAP 25. For whatever reason, when we were installing and putting the information, the data in there, it kind of just changed from the Word document, moved some, took two of our roads off of there and changed some mileages onto some wrong roads. But also we had to change the, from Big Bend Road to Big Bend Road. So it's just really a terminate change, and we went through it with a fine-tooth comb this time, shouldn't have any more amendments after this. Do you have any stand for any questions on that?
Thank you. Item M, consideration of resolution R-2524. This is authorizing submission of an application to the FAA for and State Aviation Division for the LED lighting conversion. This is for the construction phase. So Rebecca has applied and received an award for the design, and now we're moving on to apply for the construction part, and it's the same 95-5 split. Questions on that one? Okay. Item N, consideration of resolution R-2526. This is authorizing submission of an application to FAA and the State Aviation Division for the construction portion of the terminal parking lot improvements. Same scenario, applied and received funding for the design, and now this is for funding for construction, same 95-5 split. Item O, consideration of resolution R-2527. Resolution declaring the eligibility and intent of the county to submit an application for Ridge Road to the TPF. I don't know if there's anything you want to add, Joseph explained this during his report. We can elaborate it on, elaborate further if you would like.
Yeah, I was wondering, I did see, I think in our last meeting, there was a description of two miles. Can you give a little bit of a description of it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Just a little bit of, I can give some detail on that, and then I can, similar to what we did last time, I can provide a map on that as well. So this was working with Jason Lockett as well, with Public Works. We determined that Ridge Road, having been the, you know, New Mexico 90s on one side and then US 180s on the other, if we can find a way to connect those two highways with an alternative transportation would be very nice, especially for emergency responders. That would be critical. Folks that live out in White Signal wouldn't have to come all the way into Silver. You know, they could use that as a bypass. It could also possibly allow increase in commerce if folks were flying items into Grant County Airport for them to distribute. So with that said, my explanation of that is that, that stretch of road that's dirt between, right there at the detention center and the airport is approximately 9.2 miles. So our thought is at least we would like to get the funding for the first 6.1 miles of that and have that micro-surfaced, and then we would go back and apply the next year and have then hopefully fund some engineering so that we can go back in a third phase and complete that 9.2 mile stretch. But Commissioner, I'd be glad to put a map together and distribute that to you all via County Manager Webb.
Thank you. On that project, have we heard anything from residents as far as bypassing Silver? Wasn't there, I want to think, years ago? People were having a heartache over that because they felt that Grant County or Silver and all that was going to be averted to get onto 90 to head towards that. Have we heard anything like that on this? I mean, I'm glad we're doing it, it is a bus route. We do have people out there, you know, we're good for our residents, it does all that, but I'm wondering if we've heard anything on that.
So we're not intending it to be a truck bypass as what you're referring to?
Okay.
And we're, we are approaching this as a safety project. That is the number one criteria for this, is providing safety and additional quicker response for first responders. So that's first and foremost what we're looking at. But the idea is just, and actually, we do receive a lot of complaints about the lack of maintenance on that road. There is, in the second phase that he talked about, there's some drainage issues there. So it's just a road that we feel needs to be brought up to higher standards, and that's the desire. We certainly don't want to, you know, inhibit commerce or business or anything like that. It's not intended to reroute that amount of traffic, and it won't be built for that.
Okay, and I think we just need to continue saying that so it doesn't get. And the only reason I remember is because of that, a few years back, that was, I wasn't here, but you know what I'm trying to say. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Say you're expanding that, turning that into a four-lane or anything like that. It's just, as County Manager Webb alluded to, it's improving the surface of that so it's more drivable. The folks that do live out there, you know, it's pretty hard on their vehicles. I know that's a pretty long mile, or that's a pretty long stretch of road for our road department to maintain. It's hard on their equipment when they're out there, you know, and I think that would allow us to have them focus on other areas if we freed that section up. So having that in a hard-packed, more drivable surface will definitely surface community members a lot better, and then of course, as County Manager Webb alluded to, the main focus of this is safety. It would allow our fire department to respond from Tyrone more easily than possibly one in Baird or Fort Ridge, so just wanted to share those insights with you.
So I'm like, I know I have a lot of questions, but on this, so, and I'm trying to remember, Tyrone and Chino haul trucks. What road, they don't use any of that road, huh? They have their own road, if I remember correctly, so it's not going to affect nothing? Okay.
They use this for drilling to get to, so their drill rigs, so to get to their water wells, but not to move heavy trucks.
Okay, yeah, because that could pose a problem, too, with the roads there, so. All right, no problem, thank you. Thank you.
Next, item P is a resolution for a budget adjustment request.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, before you have a budget adjustment. This is a true-up at the beginning of Rogers Fire Funds, which should be the last one coming to you this year. Also, the purchase of a front power broom, a mount power broom for the road department that was brought before you for approval last month by Jason. Also, the airport grant that Rebecca spoke of, this is bringing, this is budgeting for that, that you approved last month as well. And then we have the DWI fund that we're truing up. I see that the revenues and the expenses don't match, but we had already budgeted in the other revenues for this 658 LI fund and the MP. So this is just truing up the expenses to what was budgeted. And so we've been working closely with all of the department heads to get all this complete, and I'm happy to tell you, we're very, very close to just being fantastic. So, also, for any questions?
And these are funds either ground, and when she says truing up, the money's there. We're not adding money, we're putting it where it belongs. I know some of these are a little alarming to look at, but it's part of the cleanup. And that concludes your agenda items for Thursday.
Moving on to next item of the agenda is Commissioner's report. Commissioner Phillips, do you have anything? Commissioner Stevens.
Just a couple things. I spoke with someone who raised the issue of heat risk with, and I was thinking, I will follow up with Emma, too, about the health council. But, you know, over the winter, we had the warming center, which was really helpful, but we're probably going to be moving into a really hot summer, and dehydration is an issue. And so it was just a topic that I thought we should all keep that in our radar, that heat risk, and see how we can all collaborate to encourage people to have places where they can go cool off and stay hydrated. Another thing was I met with someone from Big Brothers Big Sisters, and they just made me aware of a golf for kids' sake here at our local golf course in June. So if people are interested, they should support that. And then this Friday, there's a grand opening, Silver Regional Sexual SAS. They're having a child advocacy center grand opening Friday at 3:30 at their location on College Avenue. So you can find out more about that, but just wanted to spread the word about those good events, and that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to reiterate my gratitude for our enforcement process. It seems to be causing action to occur on the ground out there, and so I appreciate the activity that's going on there. And the emphasis we're seeing on, this is a key concern for people that I talk to in the community, on fire and fire management, wildfire management. Just thank you all for your efforts on, and training on all those activities. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina.
I got nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. I guess this question goes out to County Manager, but do we have a timeline as far as we're in April? We have May, June, July, as to when we're going to start discussing the budget and how many meetings we're going to discuss and what we're going to have presented to us?
For April, we will have the department heads come and give you their budget requests. That will be your budget workshop. And then we will place the prelim budgets on every meeting in May until you are comfortable with it. So we will have three meetings, we can discuss it in May. I promised you we would not do any special meetings for the budget, so we're trying really hard not to.
So my, I guess my next question would be to the Board of Commissioners is. And I know, is there, is there anything, and I don't know, we used to be, it was sometimes a little different, I guess, what I could say, but, you know, Commissioner's wishes as far as the budget and some of the line items. We used to also have meetings, of course, they're open to the public. We used to also have meetings, of course, open to the public, to look at different projects that you guys would like to see funded, budgeted for, depending on what we have. Do you guys see that necessary? Do you guys wanna discuss it here in one of the regular meetings? What do you guys wanna do?
I appreciate you bringing that up. I think I would like to do some thinking about it, and at our April meeting, and in those May meetings, just keep that in mind. I mean, I, I've always heard that budgets are moral documents, you know, that's where you show your values and your priorities, and so just keeping that in mind as we look over those items, but I, I don't feel like we need a, a separate meeting for that. That's, that's my input.
Do you guys are okay with all that? That's fine with me too, I mean, it's, it's up to you, what do you think?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you for that as well. I, I definitely agree that regular meeting is fine, and there is a, a couple specific items that I like to address within my district that I think there's a need for, and I know the County Manager and I have discussed one of them there in the Cliff Hill area, but yes, definitely, that's a great idea, thank you.
Yeah, you guys have your ideas, whatever, to present while we do this discussion. I just wanted to bring that up to give everybody an opportunity for that. The other thing that I will tell you, I did ask our County Manager, and I guess we can put it into more of the, the, the budget talks that we have down the road instead of at the end of this month, but I did ask for some of our line, well, one of our line items as far as our attorney, attorney fees, travel costs, et cetera, too, so we can look at that, and so it can be presented to our Commissioners. So I guess during our budget process, we can discuss all that. I think I'd sent you the email before the end of this month, but if you need more time, I understand, you have to, I guess, hit some of our archives and all that, we can do that, so.
Yeah, that's on my desk now, and I will get that compiled into a spreadsheet per your request and send that out to the entire board.
Just hold on to it, and we can discuss that in an, in an open meeting, and, and do that, so be part of our, our thing. You know, any line items that you guys think too, you know, bring them up so we can get ready to, to discuss this, because sometimes it, it just to be, sometimes it's just we're, we're so much in a hurry, and dates hit us and come up real quick, and, but in those meetings, just be ready to, be here quite a while and discuss all that. So- The other part to this is, I guess, some, some, I guess Commissioners have been, and I'm gonna need Charlene's help on this one, but some questions on executive sessions and, and some of the things that we go and discuss, and I guess our public's wondering, why does it go into executive session? Well, executive sessions are, are controlled by law, correct? Certain things that we can do, so if you look at some of the things that we have in executive session, it's gonna have a name, but a lot of the reason we go into executive session, because a lot of that has to do with personnel issues that can't be discussed in the public. You know, doesn't necessarily mean, and I can give you an example, if you put an executive session, you know, and I've never really liked to add and add and add on, on executive sessions, sort of like our County Manager. Part of the, the, it states, you know, limited personnel matters in, in accordance to the sections, and they'll have County Manager's office. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's about a County Manager, it just means that there's other issues or items that we may have to discuss with the County Manager on personnel issues, and for us as Commissioners, her staff, it's real limited, so we really don't go there, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that person, there's any problems with that person, and it gives us the ability to keep us out of liabilities on, on some of this stuff. The other part, when we deal with strategic planning, long-range planning, help me a little bit on that one?
That one is a hospital exception, and you have the ability to use that because it is a county-owned hospital, and your interaction with the Board of Trustees, which you've appointed.
So there's a lot of latitude, and a lot of it, this has to deal with legalities. It's not that we go back there and hide anything, because at the end of the day, when we come out here and there's action that needs to be taken on any of the items that we mentioned, it is a public thing, this is where you'll hear me, you know, tell Mary Alice or Ben, you know, there is no action coming up, or there will be action, the action that takes place will be done in public and in front of the public. So I don't know if I've explained that enough, but I do, you know, trying to explain it, and, you know, the biggest thing is law, you know, we have to follow our law, we have to follow Open Meetings Act. And the other part too is we were elected, and to do some of these things behind the closed doors, and I hope that the public does have the confidence in us that we are doing what's right behind the closed doors, and those are some of the things that you elect us for, is to be your voice in there, and to look at certain things, and unfortunately, some of the things that we do behind executive session, we can't make public. I don't know if that's enough for you guys, or anything you need to add?
Thank you, Chairman Ponse. That one on strategic planning, that's a very, for the hospital, it's a very, our, our community's intensely interested in that, and I, I saw that on the agenda that our CEO's gonna talk about some of the details of what's been going on with the, with the Board, the Trust, Board of Trustees, and that'll be good to make, make that public for future management of the hospital. That one, strategic planning, to some people seems like it's too vague and broad, and wonder if we're talking about things that we could have just as easily talked about here. But I appreciate your explanation, it's really only things that, that are confidential for specific reasons, so I appreciate that.
You know, and I think our community is probably shell-shocked, I guess, for the lack of better words, is, you know, what, eight years ago, before I came on here, I think I came in and did, you know, a lot of this strategic planning was about selling the hospital and, and all that, and I think when the public sort of sees this, they may have the perception of, oh, oh, you know, and, and that's not the case that I'm aware of, unless you guys shock me and wonder, but that is not what we are thinking of, so I think that will help the public a little bit. Hospital's not being considered, I'm being sold or anything right now. Can't tell you that down the future, another commission or somebody else will do it, but for us, or at least from my opinion, no, that's not the case, and I think that has a lot to do with it too, so. Other than that, um- That's it, unless any of you other Commissioners have anything else that you forgot to mention? Nope? My, I guess final comment is if you really look at, at something our community should be really looking at is our staff. If you look at the reports that the directors give up here, you know, our jail administrators, our Public Works, our Finance, you know, everybody, our airport, and all these, you ought to be proud of your county staff and all the projects that we have going. Only trying to make things better for, for Grant County. Yes, we do depend a lot on our state with some of that funding, but you guys are doing a good job, every one of you, and you look at the projects, you look at how our staff's overwhelmed too with some of the stuff that we discovered that has been going on for a year, year and a half, and I just wanna tell you guys, no matter how we get or what, we appreciate you guys, and if, well, I'm gonna speak for myself, if I get grumpy, it's just that, you know, sometimes you, you just come up here and, and you're elected to do a job, and sometimes a job needs to be done right, and, and especially when it comes to our budget and our projects, because it benefits everything, but most of the time after the explanations I do get from our County Manager, and the stress she has with not only the projects, but what we're going through with, with certain stuff, as far as, you know, audits and so forth and finance, I really do appreciate you guys, and I appreciate what you guys do for this county, and keep doing what you're doing, and keep your head up high, and we're good. So I really appreciate you guys, thank you all. The other part to this, in our work session, is going into executive session, accordance with an MSA nineteen seventy-eight, Section ten dash fifteen dash one, Sub H to nine, be for strategic long-range, range of business planning, either regional medical center pursuant to same statute I just read. So can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Medina, I have a second by Commissioner Stevens, do we have any further discussion? See no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners, are you all aware you're entering into executive session? Chairman Ponse?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Charlie?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Fodis?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be going into executive session, and Ms. Mary Alice, there is nothing as far as action on our agenda, so we're good. Ben, you can hear me back there, which I know you can, you're good to go.